Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, January fifteenth, the first meeting of two thousand twenty twenty-five. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education monthly meeting. Can I please ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is certified by the United States of America and the General Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so I would, I can do the roll call? Okay, we're gonna move, I'm gonna do our roll calls. Ms. Alvarez.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Ms. DePaine.
Here.
Ms. Fabiano, here. Dr. Peck.
Here.
Mr. Piero.
Here.
Ms. Ratner.
Here.
Ms. Sharma.
Here.
Mr. Tufano. Mr. Zeigner.
Yes, here.
Okay, we have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and January tenth, two thousand twenty-five at all schools on the district website, on the Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. The next item on our agenda is the closed session resolution. Whereas the Senator Byron M. Baer Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash six, provides that the Monroe Township Board of Education may hold an executive session from which the public is excluded to discuss matters that are confidential or are one of the nine subject matters listed, section twelve B of the act, and whereas that the board hereby declares that its discussion of the following subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the board shall go into executive session to discuss the following items. Additional items may be determined and announced as needed. Pending or anticipated litigation in matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, attorney advice on proposed confidential agreement, personnel matter. Be it for the resolve that said discussion may be disclosed to the public when reasons for discussing and acting upon it in closed session no longer exist, action may be taken on any of the items stated above. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Hold on.
Motion by Mr. Piero, second by Ms. Ratner. We also need to appoint an acting secretary since Ms. Allen is not here.
So if I can just make a suggestion, we have a pending motion on the floor to go into executive session. I would suggest that we make, we rescind that, make a motion to appoint an acting secretary until the secretary arrives, and then from there make the motion to go into executive session.
So the person that made the motion is the one to rescind it?
Yes.
Is that me? Okay, I rescind the motion to go into closed session.
Ms. Alvarez offered to, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Alvarez as temporary Board Secretary.
I second that.
And then I'd like to make a motion we go into closed session.
No, no, you gotta vote.
We have to. Can we do all in favor?
Can you speak into the mic, please, so I can hear everyone?
You could do all in favor for the appointment of the temporary appointment of Ms. Alvarez to cover as a secretary for this meeting.
Okay, all those in favor to appoint Ms. Alvarez?
Aye.
Sorry.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, Mr. Piero.
I'd like to make a motion we go into closed session.
Second. Great, Ms. Ratner, I think seconded it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
We would do a roll call vote.
Okay, so let me go back to the roll call. Ms. Alvarez.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. DePaine.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano, yes. Dr. Peck.
Yes.
Mr. Piero.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Ms. Sharma.
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner.
Yes.
And for the benefit of those who are in attendance here and those who are watching at home, the board's gonna go into executive session for approximately one hour. The board will not take any formal action while in executive session. Any formal action by the board will be taken out here in the public upon the board's return from executive session. So we'll be in executive session for approximately one hour. Thank you.
The board is back in session. We do have a, not a resolution, but an item that we need to vote on, so it is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the previously submitted settlement agreement between the Monroe Township Board of Education and the Monroe Township Education Association. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. DePaine, second by Ms. Bora. Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Ms. DePaine.
Yes.
Dr. Peck.
Yes.
I'd like to abstain.
Ms. Ratner.
Abstain.
Ms. Sharma.
Yes.
Mr. Zeigner.
I will abstain.
And Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Ms. DePaine.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of board minutes. The first one is the public board of education meeting minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. Bora. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, then the next one is the closed session meeting minutes from December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. DePaine, second by Ms. Bora. Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any abstentions?
Yes, right here.
Okay, then the next item on our agenda is our student board members' report. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Happy New Year, everyone. We're excited to be back for this new year. So we'll start off with the Barclaybrook Elementary School updates. The day before winter break was a festive one at Barclaybrook School. Students and staff were invited to wear their favorite holiday or any pajamas, and the school gathered together in the gymnasium for their annual holiday sing-along. Students shared simple musical instruments and sang along with favorite holiday and seasonal songs that were projected on the screen. Students even danced along with some songs, and the festive mood was palpable. It was the perfect way to begin winter break. The first graders at Barclaybrook School learned about holidays around the world in December and culminated with a Polar Express Day on December nineteenth. Each Barclaybrook first grader received a ticket to board the Polar Express. The Polar Express conductor greeted the students aboard as they paraded down the hallways with bells caroling around them. The students arrived at their North Pole destination, the Barclaybrook Cafe, and viewed the Polar Express movie while enjoying the snack. Barclaybrook students began writing pen pal letters to residents at Parker Life, a senior living facility located in Monroe. Students were assigned a Parker Life resident as a pen pal, and they wrote their pen pals' letters before the holiday season. They are eagerly awaiting a response from their Parker Life pen pals.
And now we're going to be moving on to the Brookside School updates. First, the classrooms, oh. The classroom spelling bees took place on January ninth. The Brookside school-wide spelling bee will occur on January twenty-eighth. The students are continuing to do a great job meeting expectations. The students earned enough feathers to receive a school-wide pajama day on January twenty-first. Marking period two ends for fourth and fifth graders on February third.
Next up is Mill Lake Elementary School. Mill Lakers have started the year with enthusiasm and excitement. They kicked off the year with their third grade student council's Snow Much Spirit Week. Activities included pajama day, favorite winter sweaters day, and toe bogan hat day, all showcasing their school spirit. Their student council will continue their hard work raising civic awareness with their upcoming events like the Super Bowl, which is for soup collection, taking place from February third to the seventh. Additionally, the council is leading Mill Lake's first-ever cereal box challenge. This event will culminate on February fourteenth with a thrilling domino challenge as students and staff set up a chain reaction of cereal boxes throughout Mill Lake School. This week Supervisor Daniel Drest arranged their annual historic Lenape interpreter to present to Mill Lake's third grade students. The presentation captivated everyone, sparking excitement and curiosity among students and staff alike. Thank you, Mr. Drest, for bringing this winter highlight to their school. Our district team continues to foster collaboration and connection. On January twenty-fourth, the high school athletes will visit Mill Lake to read to their enthusiastic second graders. This inspiring interaction is sure to leave a lasting impression on both the readers and their young Monroe fans. Later this month, on January thirty-first, their preschoolers and kindergarteners will receive a special visit from a local dentist. With much brushing and bright smiles, this assembly promises to be both educational and fun. Mill Lake School continues to be a place where learning, joy, and togetherness thrive. Here's to a fantastic start to two thousand twenty-five.
Woodland Elementary School had many things happen this month. The advanced band and chorus students performed their winter concert for students and staff. The students earned extra snack time for their good citizenship in December, and club code students had a showcase for their STEM instruction at Monroe Township's High School. The Woodland Student Council is also hosting their annual Super Bowl by collecting cans and boxes of soup to help fight hunger in our town from January fifteenth through February seventh, Friday. Student Council is kicking off a Spina Bifida fundraiser by having students and staff wear yellow on Friday, January seventeenth. Character Crew is coordinating a coat drive from January fourteenth to January twenty-fourth. Jamie Newcombe, school counselor, coordinated an assembly scheduled on Friday, January seventeenth, bullying prevention laser school assembly program called Let's Work Together to Keep Your School Safe and Bully-Free.
Moving on to Oak Tree Elementary School, on January ninth, their self-contained students participated in a unified PE day with their unified grade-three pals and students from the high school as well. It was an energetic, fun-filled hour for everyone involved. January twenty-seventh kickoff assembly for their Kids for Hearts Challenge, which will begin that day through February fourteenth, and on January twenty-fourth, the high school athletes will visit Oak Tree to read to their second grade classes as part of the second and seventh program.
In Apple Garth, many other things are happening as well. Ms. Fletcher and Mr. Radigan kicked off their Kids Heart Challenge assemblies on January thirteenth. Students will be fundraising for the American Heart Association into the month of February. In various ways, Apple Garth's classes will be honoring the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King, Jr. Student Council, in collaboration with Mrs. Lazio's class, is organizing a fundraiser called Project Sunshine. The class made a presentation to the principal about fundraising to purchase play kits for children to help them through hospital experiences. Classes that will donate will then get a game period in school on Friday, January twenty-fourth. Finalists have now been decided for Apple Garth's Schoolwide Spelling Bee, which is being held on Friday, January seventeenth. Their PTA is hosting a snack sale on the early dismissal day, Friday, January seventeenth, as well. The principal's book club for January will be meeting on Thursday, January thirtieth, from four to five p.m. on Google Meet. On January twenty-ninth, a group of students at Apple Garth will be hosting a STEM and game night. The students are fundraising to try and enhance their play area. Admissions is five dollars, and students will rotate among six stations, including physical games, an escape room, a scavenger hunt, a STEM activity, and an art station. Coming out for a family night of fun. Apple Garth's parent portal for February conferences will be opening up on February fifth. More information will follow from Apple Garth directly.
All right, now moving on to Monroe Township Middle School, the entire staff of MTMS, which is Ms. Pat Smith, seventh grade assistant principal, Ms. Louis Baumann, principal secretary, and Ms. Amy Poole, school secretary of very happy retirement. You will be missed and can never be replaced. Please join the MTMS on January sixteenth for their seventh and eighth grade band concert at seven p.m. Their wonderful musicians have worked very hard and will be providing their guests with a wonderful night. On Wednesday, January fifteenth, the middle school celebrated its November and December Students of the Month with a breakfast, where parents were invited to join them in celebrating their children. November Students of the Month were Adrian Fajardo, Justin April, and Jada Zanun. December Students of the Month were Colton Ian Cohn, Kennedy Bates, and Shambavi Pandey. Students are picked based on academic excellence, work ethic, and exemplifying their pillars of character. The MTMS Falcon Jazz Ensemble, Purple Jazz Ensemble, and Wind Ensemble will be performing for nearly one hundred seniors at the Monroe Senior Citizen Center on Friday, January tenth. The seniors were delighted to watch the hard-working ensembles provide a sample of the array of music performed in the MTMS Winter Concert Series. Ms. Samet's seventh grade ELA classes participated in a mock trial of Edgar Allan Poe's famous horror story, The Tell-Tale Heart. After a dramatic two-day trial, the narrator of the story accused of first-degree murder was found free from blame following a compelling argument backed by the insanity plea.
And last but not least, we're moving on to Monroe Township's High School. The Monroe Township High School Drama Club will be putting on their wonderful winter play on January thirty-first and February first. Feel free to come out and join them. The MTHS College and Career Counseling Center will be hosting an information night for parents of current ninth and tenth grade students on January twenty-third in the high school Performing Arts Center. Last week, on Thursday, January ninth, the high school winter band concert took place with amazing performances from various different ensembles.
Thank you, everyone, for listening, and have a good night.
Thank you, guys, very much. I didn't realize so much happened from the time we left in December until now, so thank you for that. The next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Are there any committees wishing to give a report? I know we had a joint committee meeting of the Finance, Buildings, Grounds, Transportation. I don't know how we wanted to.
Mr. Piero will start, and then I have my, so we're doing a joint report.
Okay. Um. Mr. Piero, do you want to give the Buildings, Grounds report?
Does this board want to combine it with Finance?
Oh, I thought you were gonna do the first part.
Want me to do the first? That's fine. It's up to you.
Yeah, just do your part, and then I'll continue with the details.
I'll have to pull it up, okay.
Thank you.
Just pull it up.
We can do policy first.
All right, here we go.
Okay.
Ms. Carolyn Jackson and the Honeywell team provide an update to their Energy Savings Improvement Plan, ESOP, and the following team of experts addressed their specific areas of the ESOP. Jacqueline Shane Esquire, McCarter English, the Bond Council, Mr. Anthony Inverso, Phoenix Advisors Municipal Advisor, Ms. Hope Blackburn, Esquire, the Bush Law Group. Ms. Shane's provided and thoroughly reviewed three draft resolutions pertaining to the ESOP that the board will be asked to take action on at the upcoming public meeting, a resolution authorizing the local finance board application, a resolution approving the ESOP, and a resolution for the refunding bond ordinance. Mr. Inverso addressed the bonding process and financial projections. Committee members had a discussion on the merits of the contract guarantee and decided to table a discussion on the guarantee until then, opportunity to review additional references and data requested from Honeywell. As Shane's and Mr. Inverso noted, the delaying of decision on the guarantee until February board meeting will not delay the overall project. So basically, we want to go forward with the resolutions. There's a part of insuring and a cost to the district for the insurance, and we were waiting for more information. The Honeywell people told us that they're a hundred percent never, ever, districts ever use the insurance that they paid for, so we were looking for more information.
And I'll share some more details on that. So the total cost of the project, if we get the additional decarbonization grant, which will allow us to increase the scope of the project, will be twelve point six million dollars. In the absence of the grant, it'll be eleven point nine million dollars with a reduced scope. The total energy cost savings to the district over twenty years is expected to be over fourteen point one million dollars, two point four million of which will come from the solar savings, which will be realized through the solar power purchase agreement. The bond ordinance, which will be introduced tonight, will be for thirteen point five million dollars. It is important to understand that the way ESOP projects work is that we work with the contractor to get financing for the project and pay back using the yearly cost savings and rebates and incentives provided by the state. We do not expect to spend any capital from the operational budget towards these projects, not unless we choose to buy a guarantee for the energy savings, like Mr. Piero just explained, and that is still a pending discussion for this board. To understand the timing of the payments, the projects are slated to start hopefully this summer, if we follow the timeline we have started on. The total timeline is eighteen months, and Honeywell will ensure that the cost-saving LED lighting project is implemented quickly, so we start seeing the monthly energy savings immediately after. The first payment of the financing would be due in the beginning of the school year, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, so that buys us that time, and thus the payments will happen using the money saved by the district on the energy costs. It is also important for taxpayers to understand that the scope of this project covers the replacement of eleven boilers that are aged twenty-five years, while the life expectancy is twenty-four years on them. It covers one rooftop unit and split, one split unit aged twenty-six years, whose life expectancy is fifteen years. Two chillers and five air handling units aged twenty-six years, and their life expectancy is twenty years. So we aren't just focusing on energy saving aspect with these measures, but are being proactive to replace aging equipment that could become a maintenance issue in the coming years and would then cost us money from the operational budget. So the hope here is that we will reduce the stress on our overburdened operational budget by handling these infrastructure needs through ESOP. I'm happy to report that that was one of the goals, board goals, which we, which will get realized by this board approving this undertaking by the district administration. To do our due diligence with the risk analysis, after this committee meeting, we did reach out to Honeywell to see data on neighboring districts where they have completed these projects, and we wanted to see the comparison of projected energy savings numbers and the realized energy savings, and all the data met our expectations. We saw no cause for concern, and like Mr. Piero just said, anybody that had bought the guarantee, they never had to pay back because the energy savings were more than what was projected in the initial proposal. A lot of thought and deliberation has gone into this by the board, started with the previous board, has continued with this board, and a lot of preliminary work has been put into this, into this by the administration under the able leadership of Mr. Teague, just to ensure that what we do is absolutely necessary for the district with minimal financial risk. So in full transparency to the public, access has been given to the detailed presentation by Honeywell, and we welcome public opinion on the hearing next month. I'm excited, truly excited to vote on this and get this going. Thank you.
Yeah, and just like you said, Ms. Bora, the hearing will be next month, that we're voting on an introduction to the.
The ordinance.
Ordinance, correct? That's what we're voting on tonight.
Yeah.
Any questions for the Finance BGTS Committee? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, I was gonna make that clarification. That was one of them. The other question, though, that I did have is, I think you sort of just mentioned that it has been provided.
Yes.
To the public. I went on to the website, I saw the solar PPA RFP, but I couldn't find the Honeywell presentation. Is that, I mean, we also have a new website, so I don't know if it's just not easily accessible. I just wanted to see if we can get it either on the homepage or somewhere that's visible.
I know the email from Dr. Chanley said that access has been given, but I didn't.
If somebody knows where it is, I might just.
I believe that it wasn't on the website yet because the presentation was listed as confidential when we.
Right.
And we were waiting for Dr. Lynn.
It's on the district website under Board of Education, Board of Education Presentations, Honeywell ESOP Project Overview, January two thousand twenty-four.
See it? Yeah.
And for the board members, whatever we asked for after the committee meeting in terms of proof of how well the projects have done, that was added to our executive attachments for tonight. Thank you.
And then I also just wanted to follow up the mention and discussion about the guarantee because I know at the committee meeting, we said that we wanted to hold off to have a discussion throughout the board just as to whether or not this is something we wanted to commit to. I know, like, we've expressed sort of what our thoughts were at that night, but I don't know if this would be an appropriate time or if you.
You're right, and just to give the amount, thirty-six thousand dollars a year, thirty-six thousand two hundred fifty-two, is what it would cost us, and that would go out of our operational budget. So what I just said, that this is not going to be part of our operational budget, but if we buy the guarantee, we're looking at thirty-six thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars per year, and what that guarantees is that if they told us we are going to get five hundred thousand dollars of energy savings in year one from, you know, and if we don't get it, they will make sure it is five hundred thousand. So that number goes from, you will see in the presentation, that number goes from five hundred thousand all the way up to nine hundred thousand in energy savings. They don't guarantee the rebates and the incentives from the state, and they don't guarantee the solar PPA, which is, it's directly with a solar company. So for that amount, if we're not comfortable, we feel there's a risk, we can pay the thirty-six thousand two hundred fifty-two. The data that came back from Honeywell on, after the committee showed us that a few towns that had bought the guarantee, some kept it for a year and then canceled it, some kept it for two years and canceled it, the numbers were looking good. Typically, I am one of those people who would say, let's just buy the guarantee, you know, we don't, we're balancing dimes and nickels, and so it's a question, and that's why it's up for discussion right now. So if anybody has any thoughts on this, I think this is, like Kate said, this is a good time to talk about it.
And the guarantee would only be like Ms. Bora said, if it was guaranteed five hundred, it would have to come in more than thirty-seven thousand. The first thirty-seven thousand, we would get our money back. And if it was, so either way, we're in the plus, I believe, but to buy the guarantee when we're seeing other districts have bought it and demeet their expectations and basically lose that guaranteed money, most districts, like she said, have canceled it. They did it two years in a row, and both years they, Honeywell met the expectations, and so basically, you know, I don't want to say thrown away, but you're basically losing, if it's thirty-six seventy-two thousand dollars, and if they meet the expectation, they don't give you your money back. It's only the guarantee they make it. So I, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and I think Dr. Chanley stated at the meeting that, you know, administration feels like, yes, we can get the guarantee, that's fine, or no, we don't need the guarantee, and that's fine also. So it really is a discussion of the board of how the board feels about it.
I mean, my, you know, which I mentioned in the committee meeting, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, though, is that anything that we might save with the guarantee, it really isn't that much, and there's a much greater chance of us spending more on the guarantee than we would get back year after year. So if you were to ask me what my opinion is, I would say we wouldn't move forward with the guarantee, that I don't believe we need that, but I'm just one member of a ten-member board, so.
Are there any other thoughts on the guarantee? I guess everybody feels kind of the same way.
So, you know, of the districts that they shared examples for, a few of them had taken the guarantee, and like I said, ended up canceling it. There were quite a few districts also that did not take the guarantee, and they weren't able to show me the numbers for those districts, but they did say that one of those districts actually did a project phase two because it was working out so well for them, and none of the, other districts didn't have a challenge with what was proposed. So I feel comfortable not taking the guarantee right now, which is very unlike me, but given our current situation and the work Honeywell has done, I think, I feel comfortable going without.
I agree, and the facts are that, like, they have a hundred percent nobody ever using the guarantee.
In thirty years, in thirty years.
In thirty years, kind of leads me to the same conclusion that why spend thirty-six thousand dollars? We're already at a cost saving, and say we made four ninety, we would have still lost twenty-six thousand to gain ten thousand back. So we would have to be under thirty-seven thousand of the projected to even use it, which, if they've never used it in thirty years, I don't, I agree, I think that that's something that we absolutely don't need, but like, we're just one vote exactly.
And it's not on the agenda for approval tonight.
It's not tonight. It was just so that we don't have a whole vote discussion.
It's just to start the discussion, so we can always, next month.
Yes.
It will probably be on the agenda, and then we can also continue this discussion further, we can talk about it more in committee, but I would agree that we wouldn't need it either.
Before the next meeting, so if things change.
Just to clarify, because you both mentioned this is not to approve, to approve the application, is there, I believe there is no cost, it's just a matter of moving forward with the next steps, but I did want to confirm that there, we're not spending anything in order to move forward with this, with this vote, it's just to say, yes, go ahead and continue to pursue.
We're going into contract with Honeywell.
Yes.
We're going into contract with Honeywell, is, and please correct me, Laura, if I'm wrong, I think one of the resolutions is saying that we're going to go into contract with Honeywell, and the other is about the board, which is, the board ordinance is the one where we are just introducing it, and we'll vote on it February, but the contract with Honeywell will commence after today.
What?
Right, am I right?
Yes, she said yes.
Yes.
Can you clarify, I guess?
Oh. Clarify.
Should I?
Clarify what?
It seemed like there were just a couple of community members who. It seemed like there were just a couple of community members who, I just would want to hear it repeated, maybe explained either in more, in different terms.
I guess, what are the three resolutions that we are voting on? Which, what does each, so one is being introduced and the other two are being approved tonight?
Yeah.
Don't they come up in the
Yeah, I was gonna talk about it in my
And her report, correct?
When she does the business administrator's report, so do, do you want to talk about it now or we, it's up to you.
I would just say maybe it might be better to, if, if Ms. Allen is okay with it, to do it that way, if people have questions they can ask prior to when we vote.
So we have two resolutions and a bond We have two resolutions and a bond refunding ordinance that is only being introduced, as we've said, or adopted on first reading tonight and we, we'll be back at the February meeting for public hearing and final adoption. The ordinance is of no force and effect until after the local finance board has approved it, there's been a public hearing and an adoption. So the first resolution is the authorization to make application to the local finance board for the financing of the energy savings plan. So the meeting of the local finance board is on February 12th and we would have to get their approval to do the refunding bond. If they don't approve it, we can't do it. So the application is due to the local finance board on January 22nd. That's why we had to, you know, try to get this approved tonight or otherwise it just delays the whole process by months. So that's, that's the first one. So we would go down to Trenton, we would actually do a Zoom with the local finance board for this process to get approved. The energy savings refunding bond ordinance, which is only being introduced tonight, authorizes an amount of not to exceed thirteen point five million dollars for the issuance of energy savings obligation refunding bonds to finance the energy conservation improvements at school district facilities. So the final amount can be less than the thirteen point five million, that's the maximum amount that we are asking for approval. The second resolution is to approve the energy savings plan and a contract with Honeywell to provide and install the energy conservation measures that they have laid out in their plan. So those are the, those are the two resolutions and the one bond ordinance that's being adopted tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any, is there any more discussion on the BGTS Committee?
Nope.
Okay, so then we're gonna go on to the next committee policy, Ms. Alvarez?
The policy committee met on Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. Present at the meeting were Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Faviano, Dr. Peck, and Mrs. Ratner. Strauss ESPE issued policy alert two-three-four in December and the committee began reviewing nine of the policies and regulations recommended for updating. The remaining policies will be reviewed at the February meeting. These updates are a result of the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between Education and Law Enforcement Officials, which was revised in 2023. All districts must annually review, revise when appropriate and adopt the MOA pursuant to NJAC six A colon sixteen dash six, thirteen through fourteen. The MOA provides a much greater level of detail regarding this statute and all the requirements outlined therein. A discussion on the organizational chart was tabled for the February policy meeting due to Dr. Chanley's absence. This concludes my report. There was no personnel meeting this month.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Alvarez for policy? Okay. Ms. Payne, Citizens Advisory?
Citizens Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, January 7th. Those attendants were myself, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Moraldo, Mrs. Faviano, Mrs. Alvarez, Ms. Ratner, and committee members and it was very nice. We had one high school student, a gentleman come last month and we had two more come this month and our board rep, I don't know where she fits it in her time, her busy time, was there that evening. The first twenty minutes, as everybody knows, the last, the State Department of Education is holding hearings regarding the fair funding task, they're gonna put a fair funding task force together and they wanted comments from anybody that really wanted to come and speak. So there was one last week, which I couldn't go to. I went to the one that's passed yesterday in Trenton, Ms. Bora was there and we spoke on behalf of Monroe about how we are not getting the right amount of money that we should be getting to give the most thorough and efficient education to our students. But the night of the CAC meeting, we broke up into two groups of eight with Mr. Moraldo being a moderator for one group, Dr. Lehman being a moderator for the other group and helped them discuss and talk about the issues and their concerns regarding our finances and what to say if you wanted to go to speak or on the, Mr. Moraldo sent them all something on the website with, with the letter that we're actually still revising. We asked for their comments about the letter to send to the legislators, but also give them information on what to say when they went to speak. So we had a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussion. We closed the meeting after the first twenty minutes because when you break off into groups, it's very hard to actually capture what everybody's saying. Few of them, a lot of the people worked, so they were gonna send in a statement into this, into Trenton and I think we'll see what happens after they have one more session, if they're going to. It's terrible to say, I'm very skeptical, but I hope they listen to everybody. It was ten to twelve, I didn't get home till three o'clock that day and they waited and listened to everyone. So I hope they take what they said into consideration. We listened to groups, a lot of BAs and I kinda felt bad for all the business administrators around this, around New Jersey, all complaining and that. I was sitting next to, I think it was Eveshrom and they couldn't, they couldn't finance, I think, the next box of paper clips. So it was really heartening, disheartening to hear how other districts are functioning or not functioning because of this formula. So we just have to keep our fingers crossed and CAC has been wonderful, the people are very energetic about everything that we bring to them and wanna be a part of everything about this district in order to bring more funding and get more programs and things. So it's a great group. So I'm, I think that's, that's, that's the end of my report.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Payne? Ms. Ratner?
I, if no one else has, I had a report because we did not have our lease committee and it sort of goes into what Ms. Devine just spoke about regarding the hearing, so.
Yeah, so I don't think there's any questions or comments for Ms. Payne, but to be clear, there was no Citizens Advisory Committee meeting.
Lace committee.
Sorry, lace meeting. There was no lace meeting held this month. We did not go to the middle school, but in lieu of the committee meeting, the committee members went to testify at the school funding hearings in Trenton.
Curriculum also should have been
Well, actually the committee, three of the four members of the committee went together and then Ms. Payne testified another night, but you took her place that night.
No, would we cancel curriculum for the
Yes. So Ms. Ratner, if you would like to
Which I really do appreciate. I, I didn't like to cancel the committee meeting just because we hadn't had one in December as well, but we all felt and we sort of spoke about this at the meeting in December, that this was such a crucial time for us to get out there and to tell these people who haven't necessarily asked for our opinion, you know, the Department of Education, which is different than the legislation, right? Legislators sort of draft the bills, but the Department of Education is the one eventually tasked, who says, I've understood it with the creation of the funding formula. So we're sort of speaking straight to the man, I guess, would be the best way to do it. So yeah, so last week on Wednesday, Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Bora, Ms. Faviano and myself, we attended the hearing that was being held by the Department of Education. There were two members of the Department of Education there that night. I don't actually know who the second person was. One of them was David Corso, who is in charge of finance for the Department of Education. There was also another hearing that was held yesterday, which, you know, Ms. Payne just mentioned that Ms. Bora attended as long, as well as previous Board of Education member, Ms. Kirby and Councilman Mincy Piro. I did want to share just a few highlights. I won't read all the speeches because I'm, I'll get those eyes from my fellow board members. However, if you do want to hear all of the testimonies, Ms. Bora was kind enough to record them and they're available on social media, on a number of pages if anybody here wanted to see them, I'm sure she would, you know, be willing to share them or you can reach out. And so just a couple of the highlights of what we brought up. One thing was the specific flaw in the formula, which, you know, we've discussed here, that negatively impacts communities like ourselves that have that high senior citizen population due to, just due to the way that their retirement income is accounted for. Because essentially from what I've understood and the equation is like high-level calculus, like I, you know, I don't, I can't really understand it, but essentially because the income is calculated as part of the township's income, we do not receive the equalization aid, that's, that, which is what is used to offset whatever you are not getting from your local fair share. However, some of that income is not actually received by the township. And so essentially they're calculating income that we're not getting, but we're not getting what is used to account for that income as well. So that was a big thing and I will say, I think that was one of the things that was really unique to what we brought up. I know we, when we were there last week, we spoke to, there were department, the people that were there about how it really has hurt Monroe, not just since S2, you know, and, you know, I even, there was also a rep from New Jersey School Boards there who said like, what was really great about you guys was everyone is coming and saying, you know, this funding formula is hurting our kids, you need to do better and, and that's true and I think we all agreed on that. But we've sort of have been doing this so long that we understand why and some of the changes that need to be made. And so that's one of the things that we were bringing up. Another was the fact that we receive zero equalization aid, we have not received that. I don't know if we actually ever did because it was, I think that was part of the initial formula in 2008 and I don't think equalization aid, I think that was part of that legislation and so, ever. I've always said last fifteen years, but ever sounds more powerful. And so despite the fact that there are townships, Ms. Bora had actually used the specific, some of our surrounding towns that have a higher income, you know, but receive millions of dollars in equalization aid that we don't. A lot of people brought up the transparency aspect of budgeting, which, you know, I know we've discussed here and, you know, always feel bad for our administration because essentially they have to create a budget within two weeks after getting the numbers. You know, this is definitely something that a lot of people brought up at that hearing, you know, give us more time, let us look online to find out what we're getting and why, don't make it so complicated that nobody understands it. You know, one of the, I forget if it was a BA or a superintendent had mentioned, like, we lose so many hours because we have to create five different scenarios, you know, that could be used for better things. So that's also in one of the legislative bills that had been brought up, but hasn't moved since it was brought up last month to require additional time for districts. You know, and then I'd say the last, oh, there was the exceptions to the two percent cap because that really limits us and I know Dr. Lehman had actually brought this up when we were at the Citizens Advisor Committee and I think we've actually discussed this a couple of times before, that while there are certain, like a very few exemptions to the two percent cap, such as healthcare, whereas if those costs are, you know, higher, you can increase your total amount over that, there are other categories that are just growing at so much of a higher rate than that two percent cap, right? So a couple of the things that were brought up were transportation, you know, and out-of-district special education because, right, staffing, salary needs as well, but essentially we want to make sure that all students are getting what they rightfully should have, right? But we need the tools in order to be able to do that. And then just like the last thing that we all sort of touched on was that full-day kindergarten component. And I think that where the disparate, like where they don't understand necessarily, and I shouldn't say they, because maybe a few of the people at the state do, but it's not just the funding for us. That is a part of it, right? Like we, we need to be able to provide staffing and, you know, curriculum and things like that, but it's the fact that the affordable housing mandates and things like that created such a population boom in Monroe that we had to build two new schools in twenty years and they were essentially overcrowded when they opened. We just, we literally don't have this space. So even if we were to find room in our very limited budget to accommodate staffing and curricular needs, we need that part of it first. And so, and it obviously really hurts us because we can't get preschool aid because we don't have full-day kindergarten, it's just a never-ending cycle. So, you know, there have been some talks, I won't go into too much detail about what was put on, on, from the, the governor's address yesterday and things like that, but essentially there's a lot of focus on this issue right now, more so I feel like than ever before because of the number of people that are hurting and because S2 just, just finished. And, you know, we've reached out multiple times and Ms. Faviano can, you know, talk about that. We're doing as much as we can and I think as a community, the more we can do, the better. They are accepting the email testimonies until January 17th at the Department of Education. So I know we had something, sent something out district-wide to all of our people that are on our mailing list with the hearing dates and that they could submit written testimony. But I also think it would be great if we could possibly maybe provide a sample written testimony, which Ms. Bora, I think, had actually shared something like that on social media today as well, for people to submit before the 17th because we want to get as many numbers in there as we can.
And that was also discussed at the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Right.
At least the group that I, that Ms. Alvarez and I were with, there was a sample testimony that was like shared, I think Mr. Moraldo was sharing it with the group, you know, and they get, that we have a folder, right, with key points and things like that. To your point, we did make sure to grab the DOE official who was standing off on the side of the room and just put in a quick plug for
David.
Yes, David, to for Monroe and he was like, oh yeah, Monroe. He's like, yeah, you know, you're, you're a unique situation and Ms. Bora was having a different conversation and she's like, but that doesn't mean we're not entitled to our fair share. So we, we are trying our best. I did reach out to Senator Greenstein, Assemblyman D'Angelo, Assemblywoman McCoy, again, I sent a follow-up email, again, reattaching the letter that Ms. Ratner sent in October, I believe it was. So that's where we're at. It's definitely not for lack of effort, but we are really trying to hopefully get some change happening here. Ms. Bora?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about this in my other board business, but I think this is a more appropriate time. You know, I, as a rule, I try my best not to impart any board-related information on social media, but I've broken that rule consciously twice in my board career, which is my fourth year. One was when we were going out to the budget question, I held open, you know, information sessions and I really engaged actively on social media to give people the right information and I did that again today. Actually in the last week, sharing everybody's testimonies to create awareness on Facebook and then today during my lunch hour, I reached out on what is a more effective social media channel these days, WhatsApp. I must have reached out to ten groups and I know those ten groups forwarded it to many more groups. I shared a modified version of my testimony as a template. I gave them a four-step process. I told them it's gonna take them one minute to give the testimony and my phone's been going off the hook all day. Before we started this meeting, I already knew of sixty testimonies that had been sent today as a result of that and I know we have two more days. So across the community, I think just making it easy, giving them the step, it has helped. If we could put more templates out there, it'll add more value to the testimony that's going in because right now sixty same exactly duplicate testimonies have gone in, but it's better than nothing and I want to just share this opinion on, on my take on what's going on at this moment and how it's different from whatever we've done as a town and we've done a lot. I know Ms. Kirby was there yesterday and I want to, you know, give a shout out to Councilman Mr. DePura, who's here, who showed up at the testimony yesterday as well. Ms. Kirby was wearing her fair funding shirt from 2010 and that's a fifteen-year-old shirt and that made a statement as to how long we've been doing this. We've always gone and tried to get the attention of legislatures who really weren't concerned because we were the minority district facing the challenges we were facing. After S2 issue happened six years ago, multiple districts have been After S2 issue happened six years ago, multiple districts have been facing a lot of challenges, because they lost the money they were using to operate. And then COVID hit, and, you know, inflation hit, skyrocketed, the 2% levy is becoming hard for everybody. So with the, with the loss in funding and the tax, 2% tax levy, it's a perfect storm for hundreds of districts. So in the two hearings that I went to, I honestly felt very proud as a Monroe resident, knowing that we didn't have the millions these districts have had for over a decade, and we have not yet come to a point where our programs are being cut. We have, yes, we've burdened our taxpayers, and yes, you know, we have balanced pennies and nickels, and, but we've been doing it despite not getting our fair share. We didn't lose anything, we never got anything. What's different this time is that they're looking at it with so many school districts screaming at them that they need help. So it's important for us to be front, and even though we have, we're not an S2 district, if we don't become a big part of this noise, we will get ignored again. They will only look at districts that are losing funding, and we cannot let that happen. Now is our chance, when they're looking at the formula again. And so I plead and I urge everybody that's listening in, that's here today, please spread the word in your network. It takes one minute to give your written testimony. There is another opportunity tomorrow night in Camden from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. I do have a couple people who've promised me they'll show up tomorrow, they did sign up today to show up tomorrow for Monroe. The more people that can show up in person, and the more people that can give a written testimony, Monroe will hopefully not get ignored in this round. So, and hopefully we will get enough aid so that we can put kindergarten front and center, full-day kindergarten front and center.
And if you register and don't get a confirmation email, still go. The confirmation email does not mean that they will not be hearing your testimony.
Yes.
I think we only wound up getting a confirmation email the day before, but I know, Ms. DePain, you did not get one, and you still testified.
I spoke yesterday, I got it yesterday morning.
Yeah, so even if you register and you don't get an email, please still go.
The gentleman is so nice, that even if you've not registered, you're sitting in the room and you signed in. So the testimony was supposed to be two hours, all the nights, all the four nights, all the four sessions. Yesterday, we started at 10:00 a.m., and myself, Ms. DePain, and Mr. DePiero literally left the room at 2:30. The gentleman who was hearing the testimony allowed everybody to speak and did not leave till the last person had spoken. So they are really doing their part, and this time, we're not speaking to legislatures, legislators, we are speaking to people who are working on the formula. So hopefully, you know, we will see the benefit of this.
Ms. DePain?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on all that, too. I noticed yesterday, most of the districts were speaking about transportation and special aid issues. I don't know if you noticed that, too.
Yes.
It was a very, very hot topic for a lot of the districts. And like you said, we've been very fortunate, but that we haven't lost any money, but we've been unfortunate that they haven't given us enough money to go forward. So you, you try your best to give the best education to our students, but like, it's like, taking a step forward, no money taking two steps back. And I spoke yesterday on behalf of being a senior citizen in Monroe, because I know that the old task for, the funding formula, had something in there that was detrimental to districts that had a large senior citizen population. So I asked them to reconsider that part of the formula when they redid it, as not to penalize the seniors, because I mentioned that we had a referendum, and the last referendum, I think I was running, and it didn't pass, and a lot of people blamed the seniors. Apparently, it was not. The seniors passed it. So I, I think, and I said to them, I paid all my life for people, and people paid for my children to go to school. So even as a senior, if I'm on limited income, I'm still want to pay for the students of this district to get the best education possible. So that's where I came from yesterday, as a senior, being on this board, and I said, I was one of two, I didn't mention Mr. Zeichner's name, but I did mention two. And I want to tell you, too, I also reiterated that we were Monroe Township, Middlesex County.
Yes, I said that also.
And I must have said it 10 times, anyway, everybody was looking at me, because there's another Monroe in, in New Jersey. And I want them not to get mixed up with that Monroe, because I don't know how their finances are. So I kept saying, and from Monroe Township, and Middlesex County? So I was, I said it a few times, I also volunteered to be on the task force. I told them I was retired, and the gentleman said, oh, good, I have your email, I'll give you a text. I said, okay, sure, like he's gonna do that. But if they, I said, you need board members on your task force, board members that have been hit, and the ones that are in the trenches, to give you some advice as to where we should go. I said, get board members across the state to volunteer and come and help. So I don't know if they listened to that. I really, truthfully, hope they listened at all. I was, I wrote myself notes the night before, are they listening? So I, I hope they are, and I hope something good comes out of it for Monroe. And for all the districts that spoke yesterday, I actually felt really bad for the one sitting next to me. I was like, I said, I don't think they had pencils.
Oh, gosh.
They said they were gonna go back from full-day kindergarten to half-day kindergarten, that's how bad it was in their district.
Right. Well, actually, that was something at Toms River, when I was at the Legislative Committee session for the New Jersey School Boards, they said that they have full-day kindergarten, they've been one of those districts that lost so much funding, they were told, well, you can still budget, get rid of your full-day kindergarten, go to half, like, as much as it's bad to not have it ever, like, can you imagine having and then being told, you have to get rid of it?
That's the district said next to me.
But I did just want to, like, clarify, unless maybe you've got information, I don't, because the legislators had been considering creation of a task force for school funding. There was a bill in 2022, there was another one brought up in the beginning of 2024, those never came out to fruition. So from my understanding, the Department of Education is not looking for a task force, although it, it would be a great idea.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, if one of the legislators gets back to us, and we open up a discussion, then we can ask.
Yes, I think so.
Is there any more discussion on this?
I have, I have a request for our student board members. Could you also help in the next two days with this outreach? Because when you send your testimony, students are allowed to send a testimony. And I was so proud yesterday, there were two Gen Z board members, 24-year-old children, I would call them children, because I'm old, but young men, who were very impressive. But I, I, it would be, it would be phenomenal if we could, you know, mobilize our student population to send that. It takes a minute, as long as you all have a template of the written material, and it can just be four sentences, but, and please reach out to me if you need any help, help us mobilize the student population. Thank you.
Yep. And then just to, to add to that, can we also, because we're doing a lot of it on our Facebook page, and then, you know, Ms. Bora mentioned WhatsApp, is there a way for us to reach out to our senior communities? Because some of them are on Facebook, some of them are on our mailing list, but I know a lot of them have their own email list, so I don't know, I know Mr. Maralda has a lot of those contacts, but to say, hey, we could really use your immediate assistance with this, to help our entire community, to get that to them, to get as many numbers as we can.
I just wanted to quickly add that, I was actually going to ask if we had a minute, because I believe we talked about it at the Citizens Advisory Committee, that students can also send testimonies, so that's something that I will, on the behalf of students, be encouraging in the next two days at school. I know it's until the 17th, so that is a deadline that's coming up quick, but it's obviously much easier than, you know, going out there. But I think if they receive a great volume of testimonies, not from the entire Monroe community, whether that be students, adults, senior citizens, that'd be so impactful, especially when they see the students themselves reaching out. It's their own unique individual story, and like you said, it, it doesn't take more than a few minutes to do so. I think it's also, just wanted to add, really amazing that everyone who works here at Monroe hasn't made the students realize, like, I didn't realize until the Citizens Advisory Committee, how underfunded we were, because of all the programs and opportunities that we've been given. But at the meeting, I also, you know, my eyes were open to how, I guess, unjust our funding was compared to a lot of other school districts that, you know, I have friends from, who got, who get so much more funding for their programs, for their activities, for their curriculum. So I hope to see in the future that we get more equitable funding, and it's much easier, and we don't have to sacrifice anything for the sake of saving funding. So I definitely encourage, again, anyone who's out here, anyone who's watching, and all students as well, which I'll continue to do in the next two days, to write testimonies, to talk to their parents about this, see if they can come out, or at least write testimonies as well. So thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you. And what you just said about not even realizing as a student, that's kudos to the administration, because you shouldn't feel the impacts of that. That's, it's, it is the job of the administration and us as a board, right, to make sure that it impacts students as least as possible. So kudos to the administration for that. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our public forum.
I think Dr. Lehman was saying something.
I was just gonna follow up and say, you know, Mr. Maralda's in the back, and we can certainly touch base about further outreach. Yep.
Hi, Mr. Maralda.
Okay, so then, now we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, which is our public forum, for agenda items only. Members will have four minutes to speak. Anybody wishing to do so can come up to the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening. Hello, can you hear me? My name is Lucy Alpanos, I live in Clearbrook 1208 Sealand, Derre Plaza. About the Fair Funding meeting, I would hope that maybe this district, go get a bus, rent a bus for $400 for the day, and get a bunch of people down there. I'm quite impressed that an elected official, was there any other elected officials from the township there? But I am, am I also impressed that somebody wore a shirt 15 years old, and it still fit? That was nice. Then, my, the main thing here, is this Honeywell thing. You said you didn't see it online, correct? The whole Honeywell thing? Is there anybody else here who looked and didn't see it? Because I didn't either. Did you look, could, you know, did everybody read that thing online? I know you're saying yes. I'm saying, if you didn't read it, don't vote for any part of it. Give, you know, be, don't be penny wise and pound found, poof, pound found foolish. You're comparing it to other districts. Did the other districts get oilers and do this? Are you comparing apples to apples, or apples to oranges? So we don't know that. I don't know if any of you really know that yet, but I think it's incumbent upon you to go read this. Was there a bid going out for this? Honeywell's getting the contract? Was there more people? Is, is there something funny?
No, I'm, I'm smiling.
Is there, was there a bid going out there? I'm one of those seniors, $13 million bond, $13.5 million bond is a lot, right? So before you do that, and vote to approve anything, you're gonna vote to approve something, and the presentation's gonna be made to the public at the next meeting? Isn't that putting the car behind, before the horse or something? I'm asking you, table this, hold off, give everybody the chance to read it online, make your presentation to the public, and then vote. If it holds off a few years, a few months, well, that's the way it is, you better be safe than sorry. Compare your little townships, and that they're getting the same thing. Make sure you read the whole thing, and don't vote on it tonight, table it. Be honest to yourself, if you didn't read that contract, abstain, all right?
Just, just to be clear, the presentation has been made, was public the night of the committee meeting? And it's been on the, it's under the, it's in two spots on the district website, it's under the committee meeting.
We have someone on this board who didn't read it, that didn't see it.
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay, excuse me, I have the floor, thank you.
Sure, no problem.
So what's the presentation next month?
What, presentation next month?
Yeah, that Honeywell's coming to do.
Honeywell's not coming to do a presentation.
Did you say something's happening next month?
Yes, we're voting, we'll be, we'll be voting next month.
A public hearing.
There's a public hearing next month.
A public hearing, so why don't you have the public hearing before you vote? That would be prudent.
For next, yes, that, that will happen next month, the public hearing will be next month.
Before you vote on any of your issues tonight regarding a $13 million bond.
Ms. Ratner?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to clarify, I appreciate you, because I don't like to vote on anything without doing my diligence, and I, I'm pretty sure the people that are here can tell you, I, I definitely do my research. This was presented at our Budget, BGTS Committee meeting, which I attended, which was also made available to the public. However, the presentation itself, the PowerPoint, we had asked to also be put on our district website, so that anyone in the public could see it. It was also shared with all of the board members to review for the meeting tonight.
Was there any other companies that you got to look at?
And can I answer the bid? Ms. Fabiano, can I answer?
Was there, was there any other company? Was this went out to bid, or you're just appointing Honeywell?
No, there were two, there were two companies that came to the Buildings Grounds Committee meeting in May, I believe. This was the company that the board elected to go with.
And they gave their presentations and bids, and how much it would cost?
Well, they gave us a presentation.
Yes.
With no cost to it.
It started in, it started in 2020.
Time out.
I think, Mr. Take would be able to answer. We started this process almost a year ago.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Your time is up.
Did they submit an RFP to three companies? Submit an RFP?
It wasn't, that wasn't, we, that, that needs.
Request for proposal.
Yeah, your time is up.
Whoa. Please, people, if you didn't read it, don't vote, and my time is up, but yours is not. Thank you.
Shell Arminio Monroe. I, I have to say that that's not the way to do it, and I also object that if, if committee meetings are not open, I mean, they are open to the public, but it, in terms of transparency, I think presentations like that, that are gonna be involved with millions of dollars, should be either a separate or special Board of Education meeting, that's open to the public, like we understand, and the public should be able to be there, and then ask questions of those people. So I, I object to how you're handling this, and I think it is unfortunate, and when you guys were not on the board, this was the kind of thing that you would have objected to as well. So I'm disappointed that it's happened this way. It's a very important thing, and I think probably what you're doing is right for the community, but this is not the way to do it. Transparency has to be upheld more than anything. And in that vein, I'd like to ask on page 2 of 23, the pending or anticipated litigation and matters covered by attorney-client privilege, were there any dockets or legis, anything that you would give us a docket number for? No litigation, you did not discuss litigation?
We talked about anticipated litigation, for which litigation has not yet been filed, so there's no docket numbers or anything like that.
Okay. How's the Arminio versus the Board of Education coming? That's still an open.
It's coming along nicely.
That's an open litigation still.
Yes, that was not discussed tonight.
Okay, good. Is there going to be another closed-session meeting later on this evening?
No.
Okay. On page 1723, the policy find, what purpose is the insurance archaeological services or archaeology service?
Yes, so there, the board is involved in litigation for which a, an applicable insurance policy has not been found, due to the fact that the incident arose in the 1970s. And so in order to try and protect the public funds, the district retained.
This is, these are assault issues that have been publicized? Well, it's public, it was public.
I'm not going to.
Is it the 1970s?
It's the 1970s.
Okay, I don't need any more, thank you, I know what it is. Next, how about, oh, the transfer, 16-23, the transfer number five, where does the amount, where is it from, and where is it going to, please?
So that would be an attachment, a financial.
I know, could you tell us the number in public, please? Use your mic. And I'm losing time here.
Do you have any other questions, and she can answer after?
Uh, no. Well, I do have a comment, so, all right, so I'll make my comment, and I would like the answer to that question. Now, the $13 million, that is what we were putting out towards a bond. Oh, and my question was, if the, the contract is signed and Honeywell, with Honeywell, are there any clauses, because that has to do, the contract has to do with the bond ordinance, right? So if, if the local finance board does not approve the bonds, are we still committed to the Honeywell contract? Are there any escape clauses, is what I'm saying? You're using my time in silence, that's not acceptable.
Is that something Mr. wants to answer, or?
Since I'm, since I'm not on the, it's Bond Counsel that's been handling this, so I really can't answer that.
Okay, so that goes to the point. Okay, so that goes to the point where if you can't answer these kinds of questions, then $13 million proposal is a big thing. One, the public isn't fully aware of it. Second, wait a minute, no, may I finish my train of thought?
Okay.
The public isn't fully aware of it and apparently all of the questions surrounding it and what our obligations will be are not answered. So I think things need to be postponed.
Mrs. Fabiano?
Ms. Allen, did you have the answer to her transfer question?
I do. Total transfers for Fund 20.
Can't hear you and it needs to be reported.
Total transfers for Fund 20, it's several different accounts. The total amount is 1,03182 and for Fund 10, which is several accounts, is 905,402.
905, I'm sorry?
Nine.
Thousand?
905402.
Okay.
Madam President, can I?
Ms. Bora?
Just to the Honeywell, I just want to clarify, the way Honeywell's contract works, based on the understanding from, from all the presentations I've been in, they get paid when they do the project. So if there is no, the bond ordinance fails, there are no projects. We won't do anything, they don't get any money. So we're not paying Honeywell anything. They are our contractors.
I asked the question about the contract, though. Within the contract, is there a provision that if they don't begin or we don't get?
ESIP programs, ESIP programs are, so Honeywell is our umbrella for doing everything ESIP. So we chose to go with Honeywell besides the other contractors that had come and given us the presentation. Whatever project we do, they will choose the contractor to do that project, which is Honeywell. When they do the project, they get the money. So we are in contract with them if the, my understanding would be if the bond ordinance fails or does not pass here, there will be no projects. And there will be not, the contract, I don't think we need an exit clause.
So the last question is, have you all read the contract?
I have.
Those of you who are voting for it. So in that contract, is there a provision?
Yeah, I believe like Ms. Bora said, that the, this has, and I think the reason that we're moving forward to try to get this for a hearing next month and, and to get it done is a lot of this has to do with boilers and chillers and schools. And if we don't get it started now and we delay it, it delays the whole project for a year because a lot of these projects need to be done when school's out of.
That isn't the issue. The issue is due diligence in terms of contractual issues and financial.
And I believe from everything I understand and everything presented to me like Ms. Bora was that the only way this happens is for the bonding to go through and unless we do the project, we're not obligated to pay anything. It's all contingent on Honeywell fulfilling their obligation to the district.
So is the, is the public, you keep saying public hearing, public hearing for what? Is it the public hearing for the budget or?
I believe it's for the whole.
Ms. Arminio, your time is up. The bond's ordinance for the refunding bond.
Can you, since it has to do with the Honeywell project, can you bring Honeywell in to have them do a small synopsis of what it entails? That would be very appreciated.
We could do that and ask Mr. Tate to come just so, you know, we want to be transparent, but we also want to, like, the thing was that if we didn't move forward to get some of these things approved to do it, we lose out on the.
I got that, they're two different issues.
No, I agree, I agree. We'd never, as a board, myself, would never want to spend money that we're not getting a result on, yes.
Ms. Allen, for next month, maybe we can have Honeywell and Bond Counsel here?
And Mr. Tate?
Yep.
Right, it just, I'm sorry. So just to, just to clarify, this last line right here, this is, this is the resolution that's on the agenda. It just says, we are voting to approve a contract with Honeywell, to, like, a desire to approve a contract. So we are not actually entering into the contract as we would like to move forward with a contract.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, hi. Chrissy Skirby, Monroe Township. The resolution says, resolution of the Board of Education, Monroe Township, to approve a contract, approving the energy savings plan and a contract to provide and install energy conservation measures. And there's a dollar amount that the contract, that the contract is worth, which is up around 12 and a half million dollars. You're approving the contract tonight and I agree with Ms. Arminio that this is, this is putting the part before the course. You should be having a presentation here for the public to see in light of transparency that you all promised the community, having a discussion with the community of this. One of the things that, Ms. Arminio, if you haven't watched, you would, you should know, Honeywell is like the go-between. So they are going to hire the other contractors. One of the contractors that they had talked about was a solar contract. That Honeywell said was not going to be guaranteed money back to us. I do want to talk about what you, Ms. Ratner, and you, Ms. Bora, had said, and I know Ms. Bora and I have had conversations about this, the guarantee. The guarantee is almost like an insurance policy. Things happen, unforeseen things. Maybe in however many years that they say they haven't paid out the guarantee, maybe that's true, I don't know if you've seen proof or not, but things do happen. To pay $30,000 to know that you're going to get $500,000 at the end seems like a reasonable outlay of money. You know, you're taking a gamble, you're going out $13.5 million. Don't say it's not taxpayer money or the taxpayers aren't going to be affected by it. Because anything that you save here is our money. And if you take this gamble, and that's what it is, it's taking a gamble, especially on the solar piece, because she made a point to keep saying, the solar is not guaranteed. The only thing that Honeywell was guaranteeing was the money coming in from the lighting. Correct me if I'm wrong. She said that over and over again, that's what the guarantee was for. So to sit here and say you don't think that you want to take out an insurance policy when you're talking about 13 and a half million dollars? We couldn't get the town to come out and drove us to vote for $2 million to not cut busing. That was a narrow vote. How do you think the taxpayers are going to feel when you're going out for 13.5 million they don't even know? They have questions, a presentation hasn't been made. That's a huge gamble to take with, and it is, it's our money. So I would ask that you table this as well and do it the right way. Introduce it, have a hearing, the contract. I don't know if the contract has to be approved tonight, but it seems like you're approving a contract, but then you're going to approve the money to pay for the contract another time. Well, if you don't approve that money, you're still in a contract, like Ms. Arminio said, unless there's a clause that gets you out of it. I don't know. The public hasn't been made aware of the contract. So I, I really think you're, you're rushing to meet a deadline in January of a refund, or February, the refunding bond entrenchment that meeting. You're rushing to get there and you're doing it at the expense of our township and I don't think that's a good thing. One question on the, on here that you're going to be voting for the field trip buses, to have coach buses, you're going to be approving that? Is that approving field trips to all have coach buses if the schools require them or are you going to cancel them like you did last year?
Which agenda item is it that you're referring?
It's somewhere in here where it said to approve a company, it was a certain company for field trips, for coach buses.
Nine or 10 member?
10.
It's 10 member.
It's, it's an approval of a company so that they can request quotes from them if, if necessary. When transportation is looking for a bus company, they go out, they have different companies we've approved that they can call for quotes. So this is just an approval of a quote, to obtain quotes from this company as necessary.
Okay, you'll just, let me just ask one question, please. I know you gave Ms. Arminio some extra time. Last year, the field trips across the district at the end of the elementary schools had their coach buses canceled, parents paid for them already, they, the schools had to issue up around 500 checks each back to parents for $4 or $10, whatever the difference was, because the business office didn't realize that they were going to go over the bid threshold. We had conversations with Board Attorney and he said to avoid that going forward, that you could go out to bid for a, specifically for coach buses. If you don't get somebody to bid, you can go out again for a second bid. If nobody answers that bid, the district can hire whichever coach bus company that they would want for those field trips. I'm asking because I've been being told by my school that the, the go-around is to go through the PTAs this year for them to hire coach buses for the field trips and it didn't sound right to me. So I emailed, I have not gotten an answer back. So I'm asking, are the elementary schools that want to have coach buses going to be able to get coach buses? The district does not pay one dime of it, the parents fund that. We pay 100% of our field trips, including the buses. So are the schools going to be allowed to have coach buses this year?
Dr. Lehman?
So the issue we ran into last year is we hit the cap and the workaround that, you know, was communicated was to have the PTAs become involved. I will cycle back to see where that is. Clearly, we're reaching out for more contractors, so if we're approaching caps, we have more contractors and options, but I will, I will get back to you with an answer.
The wraparound for the PTAs was only for last year.
Yep, and I'll get back to you with the status of where we stand this year. I'll talk with Ms. Allen, Dr. Chanley, and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's Report. I'm sorry, hold on, sorry, hold on. Is there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing now we will close the public forum. The next item on our agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
So I'm going to merge it again this month with the Superintendent's Report. So very quickly, we have something, and the student board members do an amazing job and I was expecting them to actually cover this, so I'm kind of glad they didn't, so it's not a second time you're hearing this. But on Friday, January 3rd, the Monroe Township High School welcomed an internationally acclaimed percussionist, Ms. Julie Devila, to work with our high school percussionists and percussion ensembles as well as our student, our full students and staff. She joined us from Middle Tennessee State University. She treated students to a master class and offered critical feedback as our MTHS students prepare for upcoming concerts and honors and state-level auditions. It's a wonderful experience for all our high, high school percussion students and teachers and I just wanted to use this, this is a good example of our professional staff using their network and leveraging opportunities. This, we didn't bring this person in from Middle Tennessee. This, this professional was in the area on other professional business and we were able to leverage their presence in the state and network and bring them in to provide this opportunity for our students. So those opportunities don't happen when we don't get out there and professionally network. So this happens throughout the year in many, many disciplines. It saves, we wouldn't, we wouldn't traditionally pay travel and bring this person in unless we had a grant or some special funding, but this is an opportunity, like I said, she was in the state, on other professional business in the state and we were able to bring her in and engage with the students. So kudos to the entire staff that made those connections and brought this professional in, but also, you know, the students and the teachers had a tremendous opportunity to work with a leader in their field. So that concludes my Assistant Superintendent Report and I'm going to move into the Superintendent's So for 10-member vote personnel, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items A through O.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Bora, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Bora?
I have a comment. I did share my concerns with the administration, but I do want to speak to it publicly as well. We're voting to, we're voting to approve the current district Special Ed Supervisor for grade six through 12 to become the Assistant Principal at MTHS. And while I have no doubt and this recommendation has my support that he will do great, I do have a concern about the open position for the Special Ed Supervisor. I spoke with Dr. Lehman about it and I have been assured that, like has happened in the district in the, in the past, the current, you know, the, I believe I can take the name right, Mr. Weiss, because he's on the agenda and I'm talking about.
We need to be careful.
All right, so I've been assured that both the roles will be, will have his attention in the span that we fill the Special Ed Supervisor role because for, for our district with 20% Special Ed student population, it is critical that this position is filled quickly and in, in the time that it is not, it has the attention of our administration that we, you know, we don't miss a beat. And that's my hope and I do support this recommendation, but I did want to, you know, share my concern publicly.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, but I am going to recuse on letter A.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So I'm going to do another 10-member because there's an additional letter P now in that section, so in the under 10-member vote.
There's a different personnel.
It's just at the bottom of the last page. So I would like to, it's recommended that the board approve attached items O, or P, rather.
There a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Bora, second by, sorry, motion by Ms. DePaine, second by Ms. Ratner. Any questions or comments about that one item?
Yeah, I'm not understanding what the extra item is.
I don't see it either.
No, because my agenda says Board Action Items A through P.
Well, this is 10-member, it's the substitutes, right?
Yep. It's under 10-member, it's P. Yep.
But I think on his agenda it was A through O.
Mine said A through O.
Sorry, yes.
So I'm just adding P now.
Yep.
Yep, mine said A through O, so I'm correcting it. Yep, so that's why I didn't want to miss P. It's on the agenda.
Okay. I understand, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Tufana, oh, sorry, Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Dr. Peck, I, Dr. Peck, yes. Okay, motion passes.
Okay, so under the nine-member, it's recommended that the board approve the attached personnel items Q through AG.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratner, second by Ms. DePaine. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes, on AD, the amount of chaperones for the seventh grade dance, is that normal to have 15 chaperones for that dance? That you always have that?
Yes, it's, that is a consistent number and it's a function of, they're very well attended and student safety is always our priority.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
Yep, I just had a quick question regarding the, I guess, this is letter AC, but with the Title I programs, are those, those are grant funded or is that, I was curious, like, is there for us to know that it's coming from, like, it can only be used for that purpose? Is?
Title, Title I is assigned to specific schools.
Right.
And then when we, like, it says in AC for Title I winter, so these are allocated, the account number is a title account and they're, each school has an allotment, each school has a plan in terms of their implementation of using the title fund. So you'll see different programs from our different title schools.
Okay, sounds good. No, we had asked for the, I think it was field trip, I remember what it was, that we had asked about grant funding for other things, which you were grateful enough to put on there for us. So just for transparency, these are grant-funded programs or?
Yep, title-funded, yeah.
Ms. Allen, can we have a, and any other questions, comments? Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
For Board Action 10-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve the attached Board Action items A through I.
Motion?
Second. Motion by Ms. Boras, second by Ms. Alvarez. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Piero?
On the, there's a professional development for a summit in Florida for $3,037 in March for the superintendent.
Use your mic, please.
There's a summit. It says in March for $3,000, $3,037 to 37 cents to send the superintendent to Florida for five days for a conference. I would just question, the same conference is in New York, and it's a lot less, I think, that with our budget constrictions and trying to save money, I think that's a lot of money to send somebody to Florida for a conference. And then I also had another question, there is another conference in Atlantic City where we're sending the Director of Transportation, and we're sending a mechanic. I was just curious if we're, why would we, I don't know what the conference is, it doesn't say that one, it just says 50.
STS?
STS, 55th Annual Conference, and I didn't know if that was common, to send a mechanic to the conference along with, just.
Yes, yep, so those two personnels going down to Atlantic City are going to the transportation conference.
Is that what it is, the transportation?
Yep, yep, and that's, Atlantic City is a very common place for state conferences to occur, so that's very, that's standard. And regarding the other question you had, that is, you know, another common place for conferences to happen, it's a national conference.
My thing is, though, if it's held right here in New York, wouldn't it make more sense for our superintendent to attend a conference in New York instead of going all the way to Florida for the same conference? I mean, it would be definitely a savings to the district. I just, I just think that's a little expensive at a time when we're trying to save some money. It's my comment.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
No to A, the last item on the professional development list, yes to the rest.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all.
Ms. DePain?
Yes to all, but no to the last item person on the professional development list.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, however, I need to recuse on letter A for Dr. Chanley and Mr. Snyder.
Okay, Mr. Piero?
Yes to all, and no to the last one on the agenda also. For personnel, I mean, for professional development.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes to all, and no for the staff professional development, the last item.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes to all, except for the last item on the agenda, Mr. Shanley's.
And Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, no on the last item for professional development.
Okay, so, motion passes except for that item on professional development.
So, under Board Action, nine-member vote, it's recommended that the board approve attached Board Action items J through O.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boras, second by Ms. DePain. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing now, let's have a roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, however, recuse on letter J for Mr. Laurie and Ms. Francis.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Business Administrators' report.
So, we've already discussed the resolutions and the ordinance that are on the agenda, so. It is recommended that Board Action items A through L be approved by consent roll call under a 10-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Boras, second by Ms. Ratner. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
I wanted to thank the Pond community for their donation to the high school choral program, as well as resident Joseph Winters for his donation to the graphic design program at the high school.
Can I add?
Ms. Bora?
To that, I think also Bo Weinburgers for their donation, which has been presented in a very creative way. I just saw the advertisement on the MTHS sports business social media that for our basketball games and halftime, they'll have a three-point shooting competition, and winners will get a $25 gift card from Bo Weinburgers. So I think that's very creative. We'd increase community engagement in our sports and not fund it out of our budget, so thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Dr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I would like to recuse on the bill list, C0 for 820, and C0 for 81481 for Methesal Werble, and C04819 for Mr. Rubin, and then on the addendum for C04698 for Mr. Laurie.
Okay. Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, recuse on items on the bill list for Methesal Werble.
Okay, motion passes. It is recommended that Board Action items M through N be approved by consent roll call under a nine-member vote.
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Alvarez, second by Ms. DePain. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Ratner?
I just had a quick question, the rebate from BNL, is that something that the district had paid for, because that's who takes our photographs for the students, is that a rebate that parents had paid more, or is it that we paid for them to do staff pictures and they're giving us a rebate for that? Just wanted the clarification.
No, I think that is for a rebate from the school, yeah, from the school for the student pictures, I believe. I can double-check on that and let you know.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Allen, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Piero?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter M.
Ms. Sharma?
Yes.
Mr. Zeichner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my report.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is our Board President's report. My report basically happened during the Lace Committee, because I was talking about the testimony. I do want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. This is our first general meeting for 2025. I do appreciate all of the board members that have attended the testimonies these past couple of weeks, and to the community members who have either gone in-person or submitted written testimony, we appreciate all of your efforts, and we are hopeful that we will see some change. So that's really it. As I mentioned earlier, I did reach out to Senator Greenstein, Tanya McCoy, and Wayne D'Angelo again to reshare the letter for that Ms. Ratner and the committee had drafted during the Lace Committee back in October, so we just will wait to see if we get a response, and I will be following up again soon. And that concludes my report, because we already talked about everything. So we'll go to the next part of the agenda, which is other board business. Are there any board members wishing to speak? Ms. Bora?
I just want to comment on the whole ESOP discussion one more time and address, I think the person who talked about the due diligence is no longer here, but I still want to give the timeline to the public and speak to the transparency of this process. I understand that, I understand the concerns that Ms. Arminio and Ms. Kirby brought to the public forum, but at the same time, this process was started, if I am, if my memory serves me right, it was towards the end of 2023, when we first met Honeywell and other contractors that provide the ESOP services. And then, you know, the board change happened, and we were going through the intense public question period, so we kind of did not discuss this for a few months. Board change happened, and we brought it back into BGNT as soon as I could, you know, get the attention. Everybody was still settling in. But we've had multiple discussions in BGNT, these are public meetings, and there has been no work done that the public has not been made aware of. In committee reports, in the board meeting, we have talked in detail, in the previous, two months ago, we talked in detail about what the solar PPA looks like and whether or not, so we have had discussions on this, we have done our due diligence. I can speak for myself that there are going to be tariffs coming with the new government. The cost of goods are going to go up. One of the questions I did ask at the committee meeting was that we are being pressed to get, go, you know, take action in January, because the cost right now of 12.6 million dollars is based on the cost of the equipment right now. If we don't do this in January, and we, you know, push this to February, the cost is going to change. One of the things that we have to be mindful of is, is, you know, how are we going to do this in a fiscally responsible way? We didn't rush into it within a month's time, we gave a whole year to this discussion. The public due process, given that our meetings are public, even the committee meetings, nothing was hidden, we are going to do, we checked with the lawyers time and again, especially today, because a concern was brought to me, if we are following the process by law, you know, we are not violating OPMA, and I was assured we are not violating OPMA, we are following the process. And, you know, I get it, you don't see everything when you're not doing the work on it as a board member, but I just wanted to assure you that we did do our due diligence. At least the committee has done its complete due diligence, other board members have seen the committee meetings, have had discussions here, and I am hopeful we've made the right decision for the district today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boras, and just to follow up on that, we have asked questions, and questions of the questions, and questions of the questions, of the questions that were answered. We have asked for a lot of information, and Honeywell has been very, very forthcoming with us with the information that they have. So I do wholeheartedly agree that we really have done our due diligence as a board to move this project forward. Ms. Ratner?
Just really quick, I'll make it as short as I can. So the solar component, from what we were told, and again, this is on the committee meeting, it does not cost us, except, you know, for the small amount, I forget the number, but, to get the PPA, because they will be handling the cost, because it's a lease and not a purchase, which, you know, there are pluses and minuses to both. However, the research was done to assure us that this is the route that we should be taking. So any savings that we receive from that is not offsetting the cost of it, it's savings in its entirety for that. And so then, just the other thing that I just wanted to highlight quickly was, first of all, I wanted to just say that I've gotten to attend a lot of the concerts, I went to the choral concert last week, there's a middle school seventh, eighth-grade concert band concert tomorrow, I know others have as well, they're absolutely fantastic to watch, it's great to see our students performing. And then, to tie into that, what I had wanted to add was, it's also really nice to see these things coming from our new website on the calendar, because a lot of these events now are being auto-populated onto our calendars, which is something that I absolutely love. And so I guess my only questions regarding that were, in order to integrate certain schools' events, are those automatically being populated with the link on the homepage? And then also, committee meetings, are, I guess, because those aren't necessarily district events, I don't think those are going on there yet, but no, our board meetings have been, so I wasn't sure if that's, I guess those are my two questions regarding that part of it.
Yeah, I think it's a work in progress. Each school has an individual calendar, and the district has a separate calendar. So if you are a woodland parent, you subscribe to the woodland calendar, which is, doesn't provide you the Brookside dates or the Applegark dates. If we were to funnel everything to the district calendar, then the district calendar would be overwhelmed with the school-based activities. So I think right now, there's a flexibility of syncing to the calendars that are relevant to you, whether it be the district calendar and then the schools that your children are attending to.
And you have to go to each school's website from the homepage in order to subscribe to that school's calendar, correct?
That's, each school's calendar is hosted on the school website, yep.
Mr. Piero?
I would just like to make a comment in reference to BGNT. My opinion is that I understand all the questions, and I make sure, and what I would like to do, if we're allowed, is at the next BGNT meeting, advertise it, do our meeting. We will ask in the meeting, I will ask about the contracts and guarantees and everything, so everybody knows who's watching. And then, if anybody asks questions, we're going to have a hearing before we approve everything. Then, everybody would have an opportunity to hear, if we have to bring Ms. Jackson back in the committee, to go over everything and check our guarantees with Mr. Tagg and everybody, so everybody understands exactly what's going on. The way I understand it is, just like Ms. Boras, that if we don't do the work, we don't pay for it. If the bonds don't get approved, my concern with the whole issue is, and moving forward, is a lot of work needs to be done in the summertime. Almost every one of our schools, besides Applegark, the boilers are already outdated. This program helps us replace boilers and chillers and things that are needed for the district at a cost where we're going to get the money back in energy savings. We don't do the project, the boiler goes, two million here, four million there, five million there. And I would say that probably every school, the boilers are pretty much past their life expectancy. So it was a big thing to overtake, but I just think that, I'm going to propose at our next meeting, I'll talk to Mr. Tagg and Ms. Allen, maybe we can do another combined finance BGNT meeting, we'll do the presentation again, we could ask some questions now that we know that the public wants to know. And then, if people aren't satisfied when we have the hearing before the next meeting, we could make a better determination, if that helps the public. Thank you.
Anybody else, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I agree with Peter, I think that's probably a good way to go, and it gets more community involvement, and the whole concept of transparency has been an issue, and we want to make sure as a board that in fact we are transparent. So we are hearing what you are saying, and we thank you for that, I do.
Ms. Ratner?
I think this is a great idea, I just wanted to get clarification, because this idea has come up before, and I always think the more input we can get, the better, but I just want to make sure that per, like, the policies that we have, it's okay for us to do that.
I don't believe in our policy, if it allows for public involvement.
No public involvement, I just said have another meeting, advise the public we're having it, so they could watch it. Anybody who asks questions, and I could spread the word, we could post on the website.
Can we email it?
Please, please watch the BGNT meeting, they're going to go over, and we could ask the questions that the public's asking us.
Okay, my apologies, I thought you meant asking the questions at the meeting.
No, it'll be us.
Would it be better to instead do it at the next Board of Ed meeting in February to do the ESOP presentation? It also benefits the other board members who are not on those committees to see the presentation, if we could have Honeywell come in, I don't know, Dr. Lehman, Mr. Tagg, if that is possible, to be here to answer questions from the board members.
But we would stop the vote on it that night, correct? Like, it has to be?
The night of the public hearing, do the presentation and then do the public hearing.
Right, yeah, the presentations are on the website, I mean, could, we absolutely can, do we go through the presentation again at buildings and grounds? But I did ask Ms. Allen, too, if we can ask Honeywell and our bond council to come to the next board meeting in February, that way they can, they can help us facilitate that discussion better.
Definitely.
Anybody else?
Good idea.
Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is our second public forum. Any member of the public wishing to speak, you'll have four minutes to do so, please state your name and municipality for the record. Mr. Weiss is just going to make a few remarks.
Yes, before we start with the public comment, I just want to make a comment myself, if I can. This is with regard to the bus accident, which resulted in some injuries to our students. The board feels, as does every staff member here, that students are our first priority, top priority, and really most precious resource. The board was horrified to learn of the accident. The board, with the administration, has undertaken a complete review of the situation, and will be updating protocols and standard operating procedures based upon that review. While the board members, all of us being parents up here, want to express their sincere sympathies and empathy with the students and their parents, all of whom were affected[1797.37] parents, all of whom were affected by the accident, in view of anticipated litigation, it's been my recommendation to the Board members to not have any communications concerning the accident. So, with that being said, while we would certainly like to say more, under the circumstances, they, the Board members have been advised not to. So, I just wanted to make that statement to the extent that any parents, students, are listening to this board meeting, this board meeting being the first following the, the bus accident. So, again, we express our sincere sympathies and empathy with all who were involved, and we look forward to updating our policies, procedures, based upon the review of the incident. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Any members of the public wishing to speak?
Michelle McDonald, Monroe Township. I understand you said you cannot speak, but can I speak?
Absolutely.
Okay. Both of my children were involved in the bus accident, and from what I have seen from then until now, your organization is supposed to have my children's best interest at heart, and all I've seen is that your reaction is just trying to protect your liability. There was no communication to any of the parents who were involved in this accident about what our next steps were. Those of us that had to put our children back on that bus that next day, we had no answers for our children's questions. These are middle schoolers. These are not elementary kids. They know what's going on, and they asked us questions like, is it going to be the same bus driver? Is it going to be the same bus? What are they going to do? And we had to just keep telling them, we don't know. We don't know, we don't know, but we need you to get back on the bus, because most of us come from two-parent working households, and it's just not feasible to drive the kids to school every day. And we're not, that bus route is not exactly close to the school either. What we need to know, and I understand you can't answer any of my questions today, was the driver drug tested? What happened? Because we still don't know. What happened? We want to know, why did we get zero communication as a group? I'm not talking about as a township, as a group. Why did we get no communication about, should we need to take our children to the emergency room? Should we need to take our children to the doctor? What insurance were we supposed to be using? I only received that information because I made emails and phone calls on my own personal time to get that information, and it felt like we were kind of left to flounder because it was winter break. We also want to know, are the bus drivers for the outside companies held to the same standards as the Board of Education drivers? Do they have to stick past all the same tests? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? I don't, nobody else has gotten up.
Michelle Arminio Monroe, and I'm so sorry to hear about the accident. I was unaware, so to all the children and the parents and the families, and to the community, you know, my, my sympathies and my concerns are, are there. Yeah, I think parents should be informed immediately and, and given as much as possible help as they can to support them. I also want to be clear, I was not asking for a communication at a, one of the committee meetings, but let's be clear about what a committee is. A committee meeting is for the Board to go through things, to present to the full Board and to the public. That is really not where the deliberations are meant to happen for the public's sake. I believe in the committee meetings, I think they're great. I, you know, I spent nine years going to committee meetings, and I think they're important and they should be attended. And when you can, and, and when, when I first started, I, when I was a civilian, we got the administration to open the committee meetings to the public, so I'm all about that. And I am not, and I, and I play by the rules, so I don't intend to ask any questions. What I do think is important, though, not everybody, and, you know, people's schedules change, and it's hard, as you can see, for sometimes parents to come to the committee meeting, uh, to the regular public meetings. So, the committee meetings are equally as difficult in some cases. So, the Own Public Meetings Act, as you were well aware, requires deliberations to go on at the public meeting, and that's where the information, I think, should be presented to the public. So, while I agree and I'm happy, and I do attend committee meetings when available, when I'm available, so it's not that I don't, and I thank you for all that, but the Own Public Meetings Act requires this meeting to be where the public sees the Board deliberate on issues that are as important as that. So, again, I wanted to make myself clear. I thank you for all the work you do. I know what it's about, and still, and I appreciate, I think what your ideas, Mr. Pirro, is excellent, and also, and I'm not saying they should, that, what, the next public meeting, that you should have a full presentation. A synopsis would be fine, but it should be a joint, so we know all of the parts of this issue. And again, if the Business Administrator would talk about the financing a little bit more in-depth and in detail at that meeting as well, I think that, so, because it's, it's not one issue, it's sort of several parts, and I think it would be important for the public. Look, we have issues with votes, and the more the public is informed about what we're trying to do, the easier it is, I think, to get acquiescence to the budgets and the future, and we certainly need more space. Thank you, Ms. Ratner. And I want to thank all of you who spoke about what you're doing at the state. But yeah, keep, keep people informed. I think that's the biggest issue, and then hopefully we'll get even far more support. So, all, thank you very much.
I think, Ms. Allen, to Ms. Arminio's point, perhaps in addition to bond counsel and Honeywell being here, can we also have someone from Phoenix Financial Advisors?
I'll reach out.
Thank you.
Hi, Chrissy Skirby again, Monroe Township. I just wanted to comment on the bus accident. I feel terrible for everybody that was involved in it. My deepest sympathy to the children and the families. I can't imagine how traumatic that is for them. I understand you won't be talking about it, but I do want to urge the Board to go back and reconsider your decision to move us to more contracted routes. Last year, we had, I think it was nine. This year, we have 36 routes. You increased the risk using these contracted buses, and parents didn't know what that meant, that not having Monroe Township bus pick up their child. And it does, it, there is a big difference. You're talking about not having communication with the bus driver. You're talking about not knowing who the bus driver is. There are a lot of time language barriers with bus drivers from outside district, bus companies. We heard from Kathy McDonald, who was the director, and Dr. Chanley. They both said on camera back in May at a committee meeting that the contracted buses weren't as safe as the Monroe Township buses, and this Board pushed the administration because kids were getting to school a few minutes late to go with contracted routes instead of double runs. You guys are to blame. There are consequences for what you do, and you, you quadrupled the bus runs, and you put more children on contracted buses than you should have. We, as a district, and Ms. Arminio can attest, we worked hard to get rid of the contracted runs. And yes, children were getting to school late. Safety comes first, and I said it here so many times, but you didn't put the safety of our kids first. I'm hoping that you will go back and reconsider. I want to point out, now, that bus route has a Monroe Township bus. Why? Why didn't it get replaced with a contracted bus? Because you know it wasn't safe, and it's not right.
Could we make a comment?
It is disgusting that that was just politicized. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Could I?
It is disgusting that you have just politicized a bus accident. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Could I comment on the buses?
No.
Good evening, Betty Saberite, Monroe Township. I'm also the leader for the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. I just wanted to commend Mr. Arcaro, who's just appointed today as our Assistant Principal at the high school now. Mr. Arcaro, we advocated at CPAG for a long time to get two positions, to get the positions filled properly, and I will say, Mr. Arcaro is the best thing that happened in that position at least a decade. He's done tremendous work. I thank Dr. Chanley and Dr. Lehman for a big support with that and for working with special education. We do have big shoes to fill in that position now. I'm confident in the position because, you know, speaking a little bit with administration with Dr. Lehman, I know he'll also be very involved in special education, but I did want to say thank you to Mr. Arcaro for all the work that he's done. I know he'll continue to do great things at the high school for our students, and thank you all for your support of special education, which is the majority of our funding. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, then we will close the public forum. The, there is no second closed session, so the next item is our next scheduled Board of Education meeting, which is February 19th, 202025. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.